We don't have a quorum yet, so we're gonna just hold tight until either somebody else joins us online or we get somebody else here.
David is expected.
Alright, can you hear us? Jenna, yes Dean, okay, good.
Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. We expecting potentially a few more to come, but not sure at this point. So we'll call a meeting to order at 2:00. First item, public comments. Is there any public comment?
Yeah, you've got somebody up there, Kristy.
Yeah, Kristy. Kristy? We're just here for the ride. Okay, next, the norms, actually.
You don't need to read them.
We don't need to. I kind of like it.
You live the norms each time you preside over.
We try to, but we try to stick with that, including the.
Yeah, I'm there.
Okay, so the consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda.
Do we have a second? Second from Dean. All in favor, please, please say aye or raise your aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it looks unanimous. Additionally, we have two other sets of minutes where we're, you know, looking at.
Bargaining first? I move the bargaining agenda, which is, which is, we call a meeting to order and go into executive session. It's really expedited meeting. Since David's here.
I'll second that.
Okay. And we typically, typically, we have.
Only the committee.
It's just you.
Which would be.
I don't, yes.
Well, we'll consider that, that's, that's, we'll consider that adequate for.
Well, since I gave you the executive summary, which is pretty close to the original.
Well, I can give the executive summary for the evaluation committee, which is ditto. And the evaluate next.
Dean has to second it.
Okay, so the, Dean seconded it. Okay, there's really, that was discussing the superintendent evaluation also. Anybody, you know, people who were with that, that was Dean, Julie, and myself. So Dean and I can vote in favor of approving those minutes.
Aye.
Okay, it's two to zero.
David, David is here and could add his vote to the other minutes.
To the bargain, yes. Just a hair late for that.
It's okay.
But he's chair of it.
Doesn't matter.
Well, is there anything that you'd want to share with, you know, while the minutes didn't have all a lot in them, does anyone want to share it?
I would share that we began in a remarkably.
Well, good.
Remarkably good fashion. Everybody is operating on the principle that all of our kids are all of our kids.
Good. And this is basically where we are with negotiation, beginning negotiations on all of the contracts?
Teachers.
Yes.
Teachers.
Just the teachers.
Teachers contract.
Great, thank you. All right, the next item we have is actually the draft. 2027 general budget.
Okay, so we will turn it over to Sue.
Not very exciting. There's not a lot in it. So we're on target for this year for both our revenues and expenditures. So I don't expect us to end the year with any sort of huge surplus or deficit, so we're looking good there. You can see in the write-up that due to the surplus that we have from, carried over from last year, and the need that we have for our operations department to purchase a new pickup truck. They use a pickup to go around to all of our schools and do all the work that they need to do. We bought one when TNG first formed. We bought a used pickup. It is on its last legs now. But we're still able to get a good trade-in value for it. So the guys want to purchase a new pickup truck. And given the fact that we have surplus, I'm recommending that we dip into that to use to purchase the pickup now, rather than wait to have to spend more money on repairs. We did equip quite a bit of repairs on it last year and not have to budget for it.
Does that need a motion?
No, I have transferred it, I transferred some of our surplus into the equipment fund, and then we would use the equipment fund to make that purchase. And I'm just informing you, and if anybody has any objections to it, we can certainly talk about doing something to do.
Okay. And we're, and in here, and the same thing you're talking about. It looks like we've been applying a surplus of, you know, 200 to 150, then proposing another 150.
For next year, potentially. So that's how we started the proposal, the proposed budget. This is the first draft of this budget. We're still talking about some things. We met actually today to talk about some things. Right now, this doesn't include any additional staffing, any changes in staffing FY27. It's basically status quo to what we have in FY26 with obvious changes to things for services and supplies that, you know, our subscriptions, those types of things, what I, what I know, things are going to cost, or what I expect things to cost. The only material change that's been added is, in the past few years, when we added department chairs to the budget, we were using our assigned curriculum funds. You know, we had, a while back when we had ESAR, all of our extra ESAR indirect costs that we were able to pull from the federal grant, we had moved into sort of this assigned curriculum fund in order for us to fund curriculum purchases when we were first deciding what to buy and using ESAR funds. So we're, we're going through those funds. We expect them to be spent by the end of this year. So we're moving the department chair stipends into the FY27 budget. And that's really the only material change that, that's in addition to the budget for FY27.
Which line is?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
Yes.
And it's kind of, you know, curious about the internal services and grants.
Yep. So for this year, let's go to packet page seventeen, seventeen. And that's where our internal services start. There's no major changes on the internal services for this year. For next year, what, what I'm trying to do is, now that we have sort of the reorganized place, it's a good time for us to transfer staff who were previously hired in the BRSU because they were shared at different points, either between TNG and Medowee, or between schools before we became TNG, that kind of thing. So where there are positions, say, for example, right now, we have a couple of positions split between Sunderland and Dorset. And I'd like to see those positions moved to Teconic and Green because that is where their employment is, and really should be where they're employed, and it's just a good opportunity to do it since we're doing so much restructuring. Additionally, some food service positions, same kind of thing. We had hired people initially to be split, either to be shared among schools, or even shared with Medowee. That's not going to happen next year with the reorganization, so it's just a good time for us to pull them out of this internal service sort of build-back scenario, and get them employed in the districts where they're working.
Okay. But that, so that decreased the, the internal services for during billing significantly.
But it won't, it won't affect the budgets.
But you're gonna see it in TNG.
Right.
You'll see the increase in TNG.
But I was thinking that, you know, because, you know, the net-net between internal services and grants, grants went up.
Well, yeah, so we could talk about that's a little different. So just, just to follow up on what Randy just said, it won't be an increase in the budgets because these costs are built back.
Just to reallocate.
Right, right, right.
To reallocate.
You got shown a different line, but it's all in the same supplement.
But in the Teconic and Green budget.
They're already in the Teconic and Green budget as a build-back.
Got them off.
Right, so dollar value, there will be changes.
It's a wash.
Yeah, no, thank you for that.
In our proportion?
Between two schools, but they're a full part of the TNG, right? So Dorset and Sunderland are a full part of TNG. There's one position that is split right now for food service between Medowee and TNG, and that position will not be split next year. It'll be a Medowee position because it's not needed at TNG, given the fact that we're closing two schools. We don't need that kitchen manager position at TNG.
So it's just changing the line on the TNG budget. It doesn't affect them, but ends up producing them out here.
Yeah, exactly. So if you go to page, packet page nineteen, that's where our grants start. You do see a decrease in the instructional intervention section this year because we did, we did, we were not able to fill one intervention position, so there's a decline in intervention. You're gonna see a decrease in instructional coaches, which is line 254, and this year. And that is due to, we have four instructional coaches budgeted. We only filled three positions. One of them was unfilled. And, you know, oftentimes, coaches end up filling in classroom positions when we have teachers who are on leave. So that reduces the amount of federal spending that we have because that person is not doing the job that is covered under the federal grant investment. Let's see, what other changes do we have in grants for this year?
Are we gonna get the federal grants?
Well, that, we'll talk about that in a minute.
Yeah.
Okay.
So some of the changes you're seeing from FY26 and where we are in FY27 is directly related to that. So let's get through them and then we'll talk further.
So under sort of our catch-all for the remaining CFP funds, we did not fill the middle school success program coordinator position this year. So that program did not run, so we did not have any of the summer costs for the success program, nor do we have the expense for the position. So on line 267, you see a big drop in FY26 costs. And then the next section for Medicaid, we have a big decline in Medicaid funding.
But that, but that, sorry, just.
No, it's okay.
Because the, you know, the summer, you had summer program and coordinator.
Right. We didn't fill the coordinator position, and because we didn't fill the coordinator position, we didn't have summer program.
Okay, then, so for the coming year, you're looking at having the coordinator position filled, but not, not a summer program?
Right, right. Because if we fill it, it will be starting right then, and we cannot operate it.
Yeah, there won't be time for someone to coordinate a program.
Correct.
It's usually done in the springtime, so.
Okay.
And then for Medicaid, we have a big decline in Medicaid funding, and we knew that was coming, and so we did eliminate one position. So you see us not spending that position for Medicaid funds, total for 279. And I think those are the, the big changes for, for the grants for this year. Next year, we're, we're keeping that cut to intervention. We're keeping the cut of one instructional coach position, all right, on packet page nineteen. The rest of the positions, with the exception of keeping the cut of that Medicaid family support liaison position, the rest of the positions are, are shown as budgeted. That does not mean we're gonna end up landing there. There's a lot of conversation we have to have about what to do about federal positions. We do have carryover. We have been planning for that with the expectation that federal funding is going to continue to go down. But we don't know yet what next year looks like, and we may not know what next year looks like even by the time we get around to voting budgets in January. So we're gonna have to have conversations about what we feel we will have carryover for and can definitely fund. And then what's important.
Okay, go ahead.
What was?
What's important to make sure we maintain, and then how do we do that if we don't get federal funding? So remember that. We don't know what, the, the timeline of you voting budgets, December for BRSU, January for the districts. Then we can put your contracts out by March first, and if we don't know where federal funding is before then, we're gonna have some decisions to make.
A question. Summer programs being eliminated because we couldn't fill positions is one thing. The other thing is, I thought we had committed a few years ago to a fairly interesting summer program for kids. And my question is, is it still within the superintendent's purview to value and, and want to support those summer programs?
Sure. So the, the line item that we were discussing earlier is specific to the middle school success budget. It's separate from regular summer programming for our schools.
Okay.
So there, those are, those are separate. So the one that, that we don't have budgeted for next summer relates to the summer programming connected with middle school success.
But why wouldn't we, given the fact that we're reorganizing around some middle school increased programming, why wouldn't we do the overall transition that, for example, for Inverden does with a success program as the kids begin to enter into the ninth grade? In a way of taking any student who's going to go into the middle school programming, an opportunity to get a head start if they need it.
Yeah, so typically, that's exactly what we would do, but we won't have somebody hired for that position until July 1st. And there's not any way for us to put together a program for next summer.
Right. But if, if the board, the BRSU board, felt that that was particularly important, and an increase in the budget that was justified by its importance, you then could budget it, fill it by March, and get it operational, couldn't you?
If we were gonna use FY26 money, I'm hesitant to, okay. The success position was used very, very differently across our schools. So there wasn't consistency in how the programming looked. As the middle school, and Skylar's working with the middle school teachers now on like a book study and getting a common understanding, when they collectively decide what is really the biggest need, that position will be essentially co-created with the teachers to make sure that what it is is what the, we need in our middle school. I don't know what that time would be. I, I am not opposed to what you're suggesting. I just don't know if it's even possible to execute it. If you decide you want to put the money back in the budget and hope we can do it, great, that's, that's totally fine. I didn't feel, you know, when we were talking about it, that it was a reasonable request given the volume of work we're doing to prepare for next year already. So that, it doesn't, we can definitely put it in. I'm just, like I said, saying that from our end.
What the federal government's gonna do is one thing. What we feel is necessary, and at this point, you're saying you don't feel that you have enough understanding to call it necessary. So we shouldn't add it to the budget because as we have evolved the budget year after year, we always say we only want to satisfy those things that the superintendent, the educators feel are necessary, critical to the success of our kids and our system. So, I mean, there's a thousand things you could spend money on, but if the federal government's not gonna step up to the plate, I think as a board member, I can go to the people and say, the federal government has not supported this program. We feel it's necessary for the eighteen reasons I'm about to quote, and, and say that's where the increase is coming from.
So if you frame it that way, then I would definitely not put this on that list. Because from my perspective, that, when I said to you that the, you know, we've got some decisions to make, Sue was talking about this, I'm gonna kind of say it, say what she said a little differently. My commitment to the system has been, we, we know we've had a significant shift in Medicaid fund, a decrease in Medicaid funding. We have made very strategic decisions. What you see in FY26, some of those unfilled positions was very intentional to offer a level of protection to the system as we move forward to next year. If we don't get grant funds, what I would come to you and say are necessary are academic intervention services for kids so they get tier-two interventions, social emotional services in the classroom. Those are the things I'm going to come to you and say, this is necessary, and either we are going to deficit spend, and you're gonna understand that if we don't get grant funds, I'm saying these positions are important and we're gonna fill them. The positions that are further away from students are the ones I'm willing to let go of right now. So if we use that example, I mean, we're talking about positions that don't service kids. Instructional coaches, I would let go. Success, I would let go, right? These are positions that aren't directly servicing kids, but, and so at this moment, I'm not saying to you as a board, let's do anything, like we're gonna vote on this in a few weeks. We may, you know, to Sue's point, we really likely won't know what is happening, but what we're gonna need to decide as a board is, well, really, the recommendation is going to be to deficit spend if we need to.
At the district level.
At, at the district level, right, not at the SU level. That if, and so we'll talk about this more when we get to the Teconic and Green meeting and the Medowee meeting because I'll say to you, look, let's acknowledge and understand that we may not receive these grant funds. I think it's pretty likely, all indications are we'll get Title I funds, which are, cover most of our positions. We'll get IDA funds, which are special education funds, which will come in and cover those positions. There are definitely some question marks. So for those that we really consider necessary, I would say to you, if we don't get the grant funds, we want to continue it and either use this year's surplus or deficit spend, which is, I think, the, the, the decision that, as we've talked internally, is the most appropriate, given the conditions that we find ourselves in right now. And, but I think very important for you all to acknowledge, right? We don't get a lot of migrant money. Do we get any migrant money? We don't, we don't get any migrant money. That's one that's for sure on the districts may not get it block. Some multilingual money, right?
We aren't receiving either.
But, and what we, we'll get what we get from the state.
We got some state funds, no?
No.
Well, Medowee gets state funds and Winhaw.
Oh, you're talking about the categorical grant.
Yes.
That's completely different.
Right, but I'm saying we'll get it from the state.
Yeah.
Title II, which is professional development, that's on the list of potential not filled. So anyway, there's a lot of uncertainty right now, but yeah, I guess I've said what I would say, which is we're gonna protect what's closest to our kids and let go of some of the positions that are further from kids, given just some decision-making.
And, and I think the other thing just to keep in mind is what we're sharing on the grant budgets. Remember, this is, this is what we have invested in this year and what potentially we'd like to invest in next year, but this isn't something you vote on, right? The, the grant is, is a budget that's done out of the office, and we're sharing where we landed.
Right.
But it's not something where you have to, we have to be concerned about if you didn't approve it, we're not gonna spend it, kind of thing. Because the grants are meant to two, three, four times a year, depending upon what our needs are at any given time. So just.
I was really addressing the question of if the state cuts funds, if the federal government, which is more likely, cuts funds without restoring them.
Yeah.
There are things that we are doing with those funds that I think are necessary.
Yeah, and I think the reason, as Randy said, that success isn't in here, isn't so much about the money. It's more about what we feel we can accomplish this summer because of where the position, what the status is of the position right now. Because I think anything that's important enough, we would turn around and go to the district and say, let's put this in the budget. Because we're not gonna get federal funding, and it's important for us to do. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think just another, something else we're keeping an eye on is, as Sue said, we've gotten decreasing amounts of Medicaid dollars over the last, the last few years, and that's been, you know, negatively affecting our revenue. There's new Medicaid rules, and it really looks like those rules are expanding services that are eligible for Medicaid dollar reimbursement. So we're in the process of just starting to learn about that, but my hope, who knows if anybody should hope about anything like this level, but my hope is that in the next couple of years, as those changes go into effect. as those changes go into effect, we start to see uh increasing numbers of Medicaid dollars coming in also, which are really helpful for some of our um, so the positions that they've typically and historically covered have been important, so um, I'll keep you posted on that as I learn more and we, we all learn more about what we can reimburse, get reimbursed for now, so.
And I have not included an assessment allocation page, just because I don't think it's really a worthwhile thing to look at just yet. We, we don't have A M. numbers finalized, and hopefully we will by the time we get to show you a draft that you can vote on.
There's just one number, take another look at. Uh, three oh two, total grant expenditures, especially for twenty six budget.
Three oh two?
Yeah, just not sure it adds up.
Doesn't add up, Jim. I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
The fourteen twenty four?
Yep, that's the same number as twenty five budget.
The budgets weren't the same, no. Or maybe it's twenty five that's wrong, I'll take a look. Thank you.
I think I.
You check.
Mental addition. I'm, I'm not that, that, that good at it.
We'll pick it up for you.
Now, that, I, I think, so basically, we're not seeing a dramatic shift from where we are.
No.
Tweaks, tweaks around.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And uh, just, just curious, are we, for the next meeting, do you think you're, you know, you, I was amazed you were able to get this together for this meeting, but, you know, the spend budget?
Budget, it has to be, you have to vote on it, so I can put it in everybody else's budget, so it just has to be done.
It will be done.
But hopefully not all at zero.
Not that budget. No, no, that budget's got lots of numbers in it.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, so we have a presentation from Guillaume um, around, probably Skylar will jump in too, but um, we're gonna share with you our longitudinal data system called NextPath that we just transitioned to this summer, and Guillaume is our um, BRSU expert in the system. So she's gonna share with you, she's gonna share her screen with folks at the meet, with all of us. Um, she'll uh do a brief overview for people to understand what it is, why we're using it, um, just some background information, and then we're gonna jump into NextPath so you can see a little bit about what it looks like and how schools are using it. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, okay?
For the last time, when Skylar was giving the intro, it really, this pulls everything together.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much the engine that helps run all of our systems in terms of like student-facing data. And Guillaume is the lead mechanic on all of it, it's really remarkable to see.
Thank you.
Okay, it's all yours.
Okay. Yeah.
All right, folks, on this uh virtual meeting, are you able to see this presentation? Okay, thanks, Jenna.
All right.
And if you could send this out to everybody after this, that'd be great.
Yeah, sure. Um, so NextPath replaced EduClimber, I don't know if you remember talking about EduClimber?
Way too much.
Way too much, okay, well, you know, I don't wanna relive past trauma, it was a disaster.
Well, it wasn't a disaster. It just wasn't great.
Thanks, Randy. I appreciate your vote of comment. So speaking of somebody who is a teacher, was on the initial onboarding things when it was still outline, I was sorely disappointed. Yeah, I know, that was way back. Um, so I spent, you know, the first couple of years of my position trying to get EduClimber to work and came to the conclusion that it really just was not gonna do for us what we needed it to do, it was not worth the money. And so I went to Skylar and Randy and said, hey, we need to shift gears and do something more useful, and so we landed here. Um, so I thought it'd be useful to start with just why we need a data system for kids, I mean, obviously, we have to track data, but what are we hoping to get out of this system? It is a really robust system that's meeting a lot of different needs for us. So, you know, baseline, it is supporting all of our MTSS, so it's helping us understand who needs what in terms of additional support, tier one, two, and three, and making sure that they're getting it.
Just for, just for me?
Yeah.
Multi, thank you. The multi-tiered systems of support, so tier one is sort of your standard, everybody gets it. Tier two would be intervention.
Just call it the support systems.
Cause it doesn't fit in that.
I didn't make up the initials, Dick.
Everybody calls it MTSS.
Well, there's an alternate name, uh, response to intervention is another one, some states use RTI.
This is true, yeah.
But even more confusing, none of it really is.
But at the state level, they talk MTSS all the time.
They talk MTSS, yeah.
We use these.
It's all good.
Yeah, when you get to Act one seventy three and Act one thirty nine, you got more.
Yeah, but those are ridiculous, so.
So we've got MTSS as an expectation from the state and just for practice, right? And we need a way to track all of that, make sure we're serving the kids at all the different tiers. And one seventy three, of course, is asking us for that flexible service model, so that you have the, the educator who is best prepared and qualified to provide the education that the child needs, regardless of their tiers. So you need a way that you can cross-reference kids across tiers to meet that ask. And then, of course, Act one thirty nine is acting us, asking us to look more closely at literacy and especially our screenings with our younger kiddos, and how we're responding to those screenings, to make sure that we're teaching them to read. So that's like the big picture, like the bureaucratic side of why we're doing it.
I'm just kinda curious, but.
Yeah.
Act one seventy three, you know, Act one seventy three was again coming up at the, the SAVSBA conference and other things like that, because um, you know, I have a, a strong impression that we have responded very well to Act one seventy three, and we are the oddball.
We, we have a lot of work to do still, actually, it's something that we've been talking about um, as far as really getting over that hurdle of um, in-integrated service delivery model. So this is actually a big, big part of the work. Well, NextPath is, Guillaume's work is, um, but we really need to be able to bridge, and that's the work that Guillaume and Caitlin and Skylar are going to be really doing now and as we transition next year. Um, we still have some uh, more silos than I'd like as far as academic interventionists and special educators and versus a really well-coordinated service delivery. So that's where we're really.
I would say to, to strengthen what Jim had said, I think relative to a significant portion of the state, we're really well-positioned to get one seventy three, to meet the intent of one seventy three, more so than some of our.
Is one of those comments that struck me the most, uh, this may have been a V SBA board meeting or something, but it was, you know, there were board members who were still just focused on Act one seventy three, it was just that block grant thing.
Yeah.
It's sort of like, you know, so you changed the funding and you didn't change the way you operate. Yeah. Which is my impression for a lot of districts around the state.
It seems like it, yeah, and it, in a little bit, you'll see in here how this is helping us to do what Randy is saying, where we still have a lot of work to do, but I'm trying to lay the groundwork to make that work visible, so that we can do it.
Okay, just sort of tied into that, the, the level of, you know, get the impression, the level of support for this sort of stuff from A O E and others has been underwhelming.
Yes.
That is a word.
Big way to say.
I think that's one reason things didn't happen.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So this is like one level of why we need the data, right, to meet these expectations from the A O E. Um, but then we have these other things that are closer to home and frankly more important, like understanding the whole child and what's going on for them in terms of their academics and their behaviors and their emotional wellbeing and all of that. And then making sure that we're allocating our resources appropriately, so understanding how many kids we have, who needs a tier two reading support, or who needs special education services, and making sure that we're assigning those teachers to the right grade levels and the right schools ultimately. Um, and then as we move forward next year into combining our schools, we need a unified system so that when we bring kids together, we have teachers and principals who are talking the same language and can look back historically and see how kids have been doing, so that they can serve them well now. And we had all different systems before, so that was not gonna be an easy thing to do. So these are way easier to understand, like I said, I think they're way more important.
So the sources of information into NextPath, that I ready is.
You'll see it, you'll see everything, we have so many things going in, it's great.
So much and only about half of what I want. Yeah. Um, so I just pulled some screenshots to, to get started here, and then, like Randy said, I'll take you right into it. Um, so at the big picture level, it gives these nice performance bands, so this happens to be fall I ready reading. Um, and you can see broadly speaking, what percentage of kids we have at which performance levels for any metric. So if you click on anything that we have in here, it will produce a graph like this, so it's very easy for Randy, for Skylar and me, for principals, classroom teachers, we'll get this for their class. So you can just see at a glance sort of the range of skill and knowledge that's in your class. Um, don't be alarmed at how much of this is orange. Don't get alarmed, because, Jim, the orange is one year below, which is where you should be in the fall, because you haven't had grade level content. So it's weird the way that I ready set it up, right?
That's the sort of, I've talked to Skylar before and I've, I've totally fallen on my face on the idea. But, you know, I think a lot of people in our community take stuff like that, and they say, we're failing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is right at the beginning of the year, and it's on like the end of the year grade level content that, that should be learned. So the kids that are green and blue already have learned what they need to for that grade, right? The yellow kids are exactly where they need to be.
They're ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
So.
So this data from this snapshot is, was from September or October or something.
Yeah.
Yep, early September.
Yeah.
And then we watch it grow over the course of the year.
That's what I'm saying, we.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's why we do spring to spring and not fall to spring, because all the spring, we would expect them to, to grow into their grade level as they do. So it's kind of like a false inflation to do a fall to spring. So if we do spring to spring, we get that full comparison.
How would you use the spring one differently than you use this one?
Well, in terms of fall?
Yeah, you, 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 you acknowledge that anybody in, in the greens after that line is advanced. So I would anticipate that teachers looking at whoever is advanced or giving ex- extra instruction to keep them advancing at a reasonable and expected level. The orange, well, we got work to do, but we're gonna do that work. The reds, on the other hand, um, my interpretation might be that they're more than two years behind. As a result, they're not really prepared to do as much advancing as perhaps we might expect, even given the superior talents of our teachers. More intervention, yes?
You are totally setting up the next slide.
Perfect.
Thanks for the transition, in fact, I may have them out of order. We're always feeling, oh, no, I did. Well played, Dick, well played. Um, so we have, over the last couple of years, we've developed this really careful assessment inventory. So it starts with our broad I ready as a three-term to your benchmark system we have, right? So as you said, we're looking at this in the fall, and we're saying, all those kiddos who are in the orange, they're great, they're ready for their grade level content. Those kiddos in the red, or they, I don't know if you can see well from where you are, but it's like a dark orange and then a red. They either are not quite ready for this year's content, or they had a bad test event, right? This is one computer test event, and so you always have to take that with a grain of salt as well, especially with the older kiddos. Um, but we need more information about those students, are they ready to learn this year's content or not? And if they're not ready for it, then how can we get them ready for it? So we developed this um, flowchart assessment inventory that tells people exactly what to do. So if you have a kiddo who in I ready phonics is scoring a year below, then you're gonna give them a core phonics assessment to determine is there really an issue? Or was that test not representative, and if there is an issue, what instructions did they need? So we had that last year. Um, we had an assessment inventory prior to last year, but last year, we put it into flowchart format, and we got really good feedback about how that was supporting teachers to be able to fill those gaps for kids, so they could meet their grade level content. But it was cumbersome for them to work through, it's, I think, three pages long. Um, so for our academic interventionist to have it memorized, it was great. For the average classroom teacher, it was a lot to hold on and, um, in their head. So I automated it, and NextPath this year, so we have these things, they call them indicators. Um, and it, they produce a number of different reports within NextPath, and I just grabbed one that I thought would be useful to help you understand. Um, so this is an indicator that runs um, for exactly that, for students who should take the core phonics survey to determine if they have an underlying phonics skills issue. Um, and so these symbols, I don't know if you can see well, because they're small, but these symbols here show that those students met the criteria for that indicator. And this one in particular, this magnifying glass with a little chart in it, means that that student should receive the core phonics. So now, when a kid takes the I ready, those scores automatically come into here, the teachers and the principal all get a report that says, these are the students who you need more information about, this is the assessment that you should give them to get that information. Um, that little pop-up is just what you see when you hover over it, it tells you what to do. Some, some of the others are other things, like that little squiggle is the pass. Um, and so then you can pull up this data wall and see, so these students, this is, they call it YEMO, which so it automatically generates random animal names instead of students. This is real data from our children, it's just anonymous. Um, so you can see here which kiddos should have this core phonics assessment, and whether or not they did have it, and exactly where the issue is. So it goes in order from easier skills to harder, so you can see this student has the first three really solid. And then in the fourth section, they start to have some issues. So that tells the academic interventionists or the special educator, now this is where you need to start with your targeting instruction for the student to bring them up to grade level. And then you can sort this, so you can take those kiddos, instead of just saying, I have these, you know, in the third grade at MEMS, say, I have these four kids who are two grades below in phonics. Um, and I'm gonna lump them all into a group and hope for the best, now you can really look and say, okay, these kids who need instruction on diagrams, and I have the, you know, this one who needs instructional long vowels. And you can tailor your instruction accordingly. And you can get kids who are in tier two, tier three, which is special education, and kids who, on their big test scores, they're just eligible for tier one education, um, but maybe they have a random poll, maybe they had the chicken box and missed instruction for a week or something, and they have a gap they need to fill. So it helps us to meet that need of the flexibility in determining what's happening there.
Um, is this, you know, beer, it's on English Language Arts, is there similar thing with?
Math. There is, the resources available for screening math are not as robust. I hope that with the science of math movement that's bubbling around the country, that that's gonna change, or be more and more. Um, but we do have a parallel.
U C of Education is currently getting data from the field about the mathematics assessments that people use. And I fully expect that we feel it, like at the state level, uh, focus on math like they focus on literacy with Act one thirty nine. So at some point, math is gonna be a target for the state.
Yeah. And the other thing just to point out, because I did tell you, these are real children, right? And so everybody on this list hit this indicator, they should receive the core phonics. And you can see not everybody has core phonics scores next to their name, right? Some other things you're seeing over here is this column, um, indicates whether a student is currently using an I E P. And so it could be that as part of their I E P, they had a parallel assessment that was not the core phonics, because as Randy said, we still have work to do with unifying tiers two and three, right? So it could be that they already took a different assessment that produced the same information for the teacher, we don't wanna over-assess kids and give them two different tests that get the same information. Um, or it could be that they are an English language learner, and it's not an appropriate assessment for them, because say they are ten years old and fully literate in Spanish, but they're not able to pass this in English yet. So this information on the left here, some of these symbols and things, you know, they don't mean a lot to you because you're not in the system, but to the teachers who are in the system, they can look and see, oh, yeah, we didn't give that to that kiddo because of this. Um, whoops, this one slipped through the cracks, I'll find out then today, make sure we can hold on.
Do you have something similar?
Yeah.
For those that are on the right side of the graph, saying, suggesting.
Not yet, but boy, that's a growth area that I wanna get to. Yeah. Yes, it would be good, it's needed, I would say, it's needed, yeah. Um, like I just said, we have, I would say, half of what I want to have in here.
Is our curriculum set up to ensure that those kids who are willing to advance are able to be challenged still?
Yeah, all of our curricular resources have extension activities, they're. Yeah, all of our curricular resources have extension activities. They're typically application problems where they have to take, like, use the depth of knowledge of whatever concept that they're working on and apply it to something or a performance task, something of that nature. Those are typically like our extension activities that are tied directly to the standards that we teach. And all of our curricular resources have those.
So we're, we're trying to focus and keep those kids engaged. It's just we're not going to be highlighting any weaknesses because you could try to highlight their strengths, I guess, but.
There, yeah, no, I'm convinced that there are ways that we can use this to make sure that we're meeting all those kids. We're just not there in our growth of the system yet. Yeah. We started out with getting all of the tier one baseline data in there. And then we went down to intervention because that was frankly, our weakest point in our system in terms of data tracking. This year, we're trying to align more with the tier three with all those diagnostics and then we'll be going next into that, the advanced.
If the system is capable of setting thresholds, just as we do to identify kids in need of additional instruction through interventionists, we can set a threshold that will pull those kids that perform high as well and automate emails to principals or whomever that says, these are kids that need to be challenged.
Yes.
Same type of operation.
Somebody else. Jenna, is that?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I did have a question. Is the information that's populated on this data wall, is this just from the I ready assessment?
This data wall doesn't contain I ready assessment. It contains core phonics.
Okay.
The, there are multiple measures that go into between whether we should be trying to the core phonics, it's I ready, it's AMIRA. It's pretty rare.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so NextPath takes data from a whole bunch of different sources of information to help us to have a really comprehensive look of on about a, any child or a group of children, a class, a grade level, school. So there's, you know, you can get it every level. And it gets as sort of a general or specific as, as a team would want. So that's part of what's great about this is that you can really just dial in really deep on the student. You can also look at the big trends of a, you know, class or a grade or a school. And so we'll talk about data sources, I think, as we continue to move through this, right?
Absolutely. And you set me up perfectly for that kind of well. Did you have a question first? Okay. So once you've sort of got those groups, this is another good thing in terms of principal oversight and resource allocation and scheduling. So it'll provide you this report, and this is live, where you can see the different types of support that people are, and I apologize that it's so small, it looks so much bigger on my little screen. So you've got, this first column here is tier two reading. So each one of these boxes represents a student and the tier two reading support that they're getting. There's tier two math, tier two SEL, tier two OT or PET, tier two speech and language in it. It'll scroll left and right as well to show in-class additional support, which we're calling tier 1.5 to show special education. And then it's sortable in all different ways. So this is just sort of by tiers of support, but a principal can say, sort by program. So they want to see all the students in their building who are receiving UFLY to make sure that those kids are scheduled appropriately. They can easily do that. If they want to see, they could sort it by service staff. So they want to see, you know, is there an even distribution of students across their interventionists and their special educators? They can do that. And then you can regroup kids right here. You can just click them and drag them over into another teacher if you want. And their data follows them into that teacher's portal so that they have it there. This is the student profile. So it has just a wealth of information and it has all of the, the big picture screener. So it, you know, it has I ready, it has AMIRA, it has for the younger grades, some like letter ID, phonological awareness, it has the VDCAP. For English language learners, it has the WEATA access test. And then any diagnostics that were indicated as a result of kids scoring below benchmarks on any of those, those appear here as well. At the top, we have their behavior incidents. You can see what's going on there. Attributes is just a way of, I don't know why they call it attributes exactly. It's a way of just labeling.
Where are the behavior incidents coming from?
They're entered directly into here by the behaviorists at the school or by whoever's managing the behavior data. Over here, we have EST plans and IEPs. Eventually, we will have behavior plans in there. We'll have 504s. Attendance may actually be live now. I haven't looked yet. We had another meeting on Friday.
So this is life, this is life beyond I ready. I go for a couple of years, I've come and done updates with you all, and it's been I ready is our main instructional thing. It's like our tier one assessment that every kid takes. And I've assured you that there are other things happening. This captures those other things and really makes the student profile significantly more deep and it folds in behavior and hopefully apparently now attendance as well. So we can really get that full picture of a kid.
Yeah. Proficiency, current proficiency level from almond will be coming over sometime this winter. It's not yet. This is all, I customized everything that you're looking at in here according to our systems. So we can make whatever we want show up on this profile. It's just a matter of deciding what it is and what needs done.
In addition to, I mean, you know, looking at this, I would think this is invaluable to a teacher to have. Does it also, you know, does it also flag things for teachers that they shouldn't be paying attention to? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's what those indicators were. All this, the color coding here is all set by me and it's on a standard, you know, red, yellow, green scale, blue advanced, where the assessment allows for advanced.
It'd be huge. Just think back to the old days where you basically had test scores.
Yeah. So this we're using in EST meetings now with parents.
Educational support team.
Thank you. Sorry. So for students who need a little bit of extra support, but don't qualify for an IEP for special education, right? So we hold an educational support team meeting. We invite the parents to come. And we discuss what barriers are.
Tier one way to five or something?
That's tier two.
Tier two.
That's tier two, yeah. And so the way these meetings used to run is, you know, they'd be a half an hour, 45 minutes, of which the parent would understand 10 minutes. Because it would be a group of eight or 10 educators just saying test scores at each other. And then, you know, somebody eventually would interpret that for the parent and they would take notes and they would call it a plan. Now all of that's visible. So you can imagine like if this is your child, then you understand that it's just red, yellow and green. Then you can pretty quickly at a glance, see how your kiddo is doing.
How fast does this change? For example, parents sometimes have some difficulties and are driving towards a potential divorce. That usually affects the kids fairly dramatically. Does this point out a sudden decline? And obviously, the classroom teacher may know that things are going on at home that might be affecting them. But does, does the testing and the reporting go fast enough so that a kid who is beginning to get involved with some relatively emotional issues
Yeah, you wouldn't.
gets picked up?
Sorry, you wouldn't see that on the assessment data on this because it's not, because it's either three times a year or it's a diagnostic as a result. If you have kids who are receiving extra support, then they're progress monitored every two weeks. So you might see it more quickly there. But I mean, you would see a lack of progress. You wouldn't see a drop in scores. But you would see it potentially in the behaviors up there. We have behaviors up here and so.
And this basic staff notes could capture something like a life, life event of that nature as well, right? If the school counselor is aware or something like that, or we're seeing an increase in behavior, we put that in a staff note, like this event has occurred. And then when the next assessment window or that two week progress monitoring period happens, we can pay extra close attention to see if
Yes.
it's adversely affecting their academic.
I mean.
And I have, you know, I have an indicator like for the, for the core phonics, I have one set up for behaviors in there right now. So that an administrator is alerted if a student has three office discipline referrals ever in the course of the year. And then they receive a second notification if the child hits five. But there's a parallel system that sends a separate notification if it, if a child receives two in one week. So that would help you catch those things that are close together. So you might not get to three, but you've got a kiddo who has had no behaviors and suddenly they've got two in one week.
Or worse, something happened between some friends in the classroom. And all of a sudden, the child's feeling very isolated.
Yeah.
And that affects how they're approaching their own work.
Yeah, we're not to that level in this yet. In theory, a person could.
Most, most of the information is updated nightly, right?
I know, I wouldn't go so far as to say most. It really depends on what the type of information is. So behavior intervention or behavior information is usually updated every day. I ready is updated every day, but it doesn't matter because it's.
Attendance theoretically would be. So anything that has an automated sync.
Yeah.
But something that requires direct data entry. So one-on-one assessments for kids, they, they typically are done observationally and a teacher keeps track either directly into the system, which is probably the most efficient way to do it. But i- if it's done on paper or it's handed off to somebody, it's dependent on entry into the system. So we have stressed, like there, we can't let things stack up. We're, we try to have our building principals build in time for direct data entry for interventionists as part of their schedule, weekly schedule, daily schedule. Because we don't want to be late to the party. We don't want to have two weeks of data stacked up that aren't in the system yet, only to find out that something like that has occurred and a kid has backslid or faltered in their progress.
At most of our schools, there's a schedule setup so that that local assessment data gets put in twice a week. So it's a two or three day lag on the local data.
There, there, there were some comments as we were going through the process of making decisions. My child was very upset because they were hungry all the time and increasingly didn't want to go to school or wanted lunch packed. And the school never seemed to recognize that my child was always hungry.
Yeah.
That does affect the way you.
It does.
Act.
It does. And so this is, I wanted to show you this next. This is just the screenshot of behaviors. This is S U of behaviors for the year. Don't be alarmed by those high numbers if you can read them where you are because they're tracking different things. So we have minors and majors are classic discipline referrals for various types of perceived misbehavior, right? But then we have a bunch of other behaviors that we're tracking here. And this is getting at some of what you're talking about. So at Flubrick in Manchester, they're tracking center visits. So those are children who go to the behavior center. And they are tracking whether they asked to go there to take a break or not, or were sent there by the teacher, what they're leaving, time of day, and what the perceived need was. So that's getting at some of that, right? If you have a kiddo who's always asking to go down there at nine o'clock and gets a snack, then this helps make that more visible. There are some other things that I would like to see us start tracking in here more to get at some of those things, like the kiddos who always need to go get a drink when really it's an escape room class. Or the kids who need to go to the nurse's office and they're not really sick because they need that sort of escape. We have the ability to track all of those behaviors here in a non punitive way. And we can customize this any way we want as well. And so I hope we'll be using this more and more for exactly that purpose that you're talking about. It's, we're definitely growing here. We are not anywhere near maxing out what it can do for us.
Wow. In the earliest slide, you were talking about attributes, but I don't think you finished.
Oh, so attributes is a way of essentially labeling kid, a kid for anything that you want to notice. So some of the attributes that we have in there currently are like English language learner, anchor student, RISE student. You just want to be able to see, if you want to be able to grab a group of kids by a name and filter them, then you can call them something. Some of the examples that other districts use, like you might use kids who are on a sports team or kids who are tuitioned in or just any group that you want to be able to access easily. Yeah. Those are all my slides. I don't know if we want to.
Do you want to jump in and look at the system a little bit or was this enough?
Sure.
Okay. As long as we have no personally identifiable information.
We are on Yeti Mode. Yep.
Guess what? It's hard to read.
I know.
Probably.
It is being recorded. Yeah, but it is. You can get right in here into Yeti mode and it is on. And so we can't see any identifiable information in here. So yeah, I don't, what, I mean, I kind of gave you the big strokes. Is there something that you would like to see in here specifically?
What, what's the intervention? If the kid has some phonics, then it's, it's all good until we get to the fourth or fifth level. What kind of programmed intervention?
Yeah.
Rather than individualized attention with that kid get?
So those students would be receiving UFLY, which is University of Florida Literacy Instruction. All of our reading interventionists are using that now. It's a very very clearly laid out science of reading program. It's very effective. It's not too slow, so it's good at closing gaps for older students. That information is also tracked in here. So if we were to look at say teamwork spaces, we can click on this. I showed you the student supports workspace. And you can see all these things in here. So if I wanted to see, I could group it by service. And not everything that we do for students is in here. Literacy is the most built out from a system standpoint. But I can see, so these students here are receiving UFLY. This is district UFLY. Of course, you know, you can narrow it to a school or a grade to see. You can in here, click on you support. I'm not going to because it's going to give us an AI generated summary and it will have the student's name in it. So I'm not going to click on that here. But if you were, you know, working with a child in a school, you could do that. It would give you, like I said, an AI generated summary of what's happening, but then it would also give you their specific goals. It would give you a graph of the progress monitoring so you can make sure that they're progressing. This little bar at the top is showing progress towards the goal. And so you can see we have progress monitoring data is a growth area for us that we need more in here. In this one, every single student who's receiving this is on track. I mean, it happens to be one student. But ultimately, as we get better and better at getting that data in there, then principals will be able to see who's on track.
How does the system deal with a parent who says, my child is doing X at home? And it's very sophisticated. My child is getting passing and sometimes even really good grades, but it's very inconsistent. And doesn't seem to be enthusiastic about learning. And yet, at home, when we put my child on the computer, they go nuts. They're doing advanced game playing. They're doing all those stuff. Does the system pick out that kid who might, who might be discouraged or this, or have actually an underlying condition associated with not wanting to fail at all? So just accepting mediocrity?
I mean, that's a big question. I would say what the system will catch, it is a very serious question. So the DESSA is our social emotional screener. It is not in here yet, but it is set up as of Friday. So hopefully I'll have that in by the end of this week. So that will help catch some of those kids who are maybe not fully engaged emotionally with school. Behaviors bring that information to the table as well. And that frankly, is when you would want to have that EST meeting. If you have, if parents are seeing something at home and teachers are seeing something different at school, then you really need to bring those people together to a team to have a conversation about that student and what is working for him or less.
So what's great, right, is that what, what the system will pull up is, you know, Randy, Randy's, everything we know about Randy at school will be up there. All the data about Randy, what, all the different data sources we have and it's all color coded. So everyone in the room, parents, teachers, interventionists, anybody, school counselor can see. And so you have a conversation, right? You have a conversation about what we're seeing, the kind of growth. Parents will be able to say, oh my gosh, that like, doesn't sound like my child at all. And then you're able to have that conversation. So like, so you know, if I'm Miss Clever Platypus.
Who's not even a real student.
I am, I am Miss Clever Platypus and. And you know, in the school people, you, you have that meeting with all the stuff right there. So you can take notes and say, Mr. Platypus says blah, 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 blah about clever. And the teacher says this about clever. And so how about we try this or why don't we look at trying this? And, and so it's a kind of a problem solving team to say, how do we collectively best support little clever? Right? So it's, it's a pretty good system that way. And I've sat in meetings with, you know, with parents, with teachers and, and watched how the dialogue happens. You know, we, one of the things that I've said, and when I sit in meetings is, let's always make sure we ask the parent first, like, how's little clever doing, right? How's clever doing at home? How do you think clever's doing at school? And we hear from the parent and then we really just have this very collaborative conversation about what's happening. And, and then, like I said, you can, we can add interventions in there. You can say, okay, Mr. Platypus said that he was going to do this. And Ms. Teacher said that he's going to do this. And, um, and then let's come back in six weeks and see what we're at.
Okay. The genesis of the question really affects the kid who is relatively bright, but underperforming. And by a considerable amount. And the question is to why? And it turns out that in my experience, sometimes you look at ADD. Sometimes you look at ADHD kind of hidden with a kid who's always been hyperactive in class, but able to calm down, sort of. But more often it happens with very professional people. Highly trained, very successful, who look at their children, recognize their attributes, what their children want to do and how they play with other children. And they're underperforming. And so just the issue of dyslexia, where you're able to function because you happen to have a good memory. But you're not spending much time doing all of the critical work, under, underpinning that ability to just solve any problem, which you do in lightning speed. Of course, you don't get the results. But getting those kids identified, if there's an underlying problem, is, is, is I think really important. And I think having taught enough math as a tutor and all the rest of it, it often explains some of the holes in math. But it shows up in other areas.
Yeah.
And, and this looks like a system that tries to capture anomalous behavior, consistent underperformance. Why is this child who has a vocabulary in kindergarten of in excess of fifteen thousand words, able to decode reading, not able to read?
Yeah, it does. It helps you notice the trends and it helps you notice the anomalies, which helps you ask the right questions earlier. Yeah, and I've seen, I've sat in on hundreds of these EST meetings over the last couple of years. And I am primarily there as a, a support because so much of this is stuff that I've customized as we go. So I sit in on these meetings and I watch people use the systems. And I'm fixing them as I go and I'm taking notes about how to improve them. Uh, but I'm also, of course, just observing how it's working for people. And I have seen EST meetings where um, parents were reluctant to even come in. And teacher said, you know, we're concerned, we really would like you to come in and talk about. And they, before we had um, the student profile even in EduClima, we're having these random conversations, random seeming to parents conversations about scores. It was really hard for people to make the point of whether their children were on track or not. And as soon as we were able to put up a student profile and they could see that visual, I've seen meetings where parents suddenly understood in a way that before they didn't understand that their child needed help. And then they agreed for them to get it. And I have seen meetings where parents were concerned and the teacher said, no, your child is actually performing fine by all of our metrics. And they saw all the green and blue and they relieved and went home feeling better. It's whatever the reality is for the student, it definitely helps to clarify it. And the more that we can get in there, the better. And you can see also historic trends. So this is truly a fake student, so the data in here makes no sense. But you can go back in here and see past years as well, you know, which I did not build out. There are fake student here, test, test. You can see the graph of the behavior. So this is just for this one student. So if you have a child who's having a lot of behaviors or you were, you were using it to track other types of behaviors that maybe wouldn't warrant a referral to the office, you can really start to notice your trends there more easily. And then if you were interested, I think one of these has some fake data so you can see what the actual intervention looks like. So we have this little, like I said, they are AI generated and some of them are great and some of them are weird. But you come down here and you get the nice graphs, you can see.
I think the system you're demonstrating is, is, is really, while it's a broad system applying to the school, it nonetheless can be used to track short-term stuff as well as long-term stuff. And it's individualized.
Yeah.
And that's the message that I would take from this meeting. You think your child is underperforming. Well, we may have data.
This is generally, I think, yeah, it's just, I, I really appreciate this. You know, as board members, we're, we're pretty, we're at thirty thousand feet.
Yeah.
But at the same time, you know, it's, we make certain assertions about, you know, we, we.
I, I know that I talk you guys up all the time, big time, because I think we're accomplishing a lot.
And seeing tools like this help us to really understand what's going on and that you, you know, and how much we are, how much progress we are making.
Yeah.
Improving the way we deal with our kids. So, you know, I think it's, it's really helpful as board members to, to, you know, get a little into the trenches from, from time to time. This is fabulous. I, I, I am, I'm kind of really proud of seeing this kind of work.
Well, thank you.
Being individualized is really good. It's also, this is up to date. So many of the test scores that we get were taken last year. And so you're trying to project, and you're not going in real time.
Standardized V D cap.
Yeah.
I really appreciate you taking the time to.
Absolutely.
Walk us through this and uh, I don't want to keep you guys here all night here.
Obviously, you know, a lot of us are really.
It's only three feet of snow out there.
Listen, I live ten minutes away, so I'm fine.
No, but thanks. And I, as I said, I, I think, you know, this would be great for all school board members to see the presentations and all. You know, we can just snip little bits and share with everybody. Cause uh, I think, you know, every, every school board member should have.
We wish we had these for our kids, right?
Yeah.
I would just add. As a, as a.
Yeah, wait, can we get school board members?
Sure, yeah, I mean, it's six bucks a head, so they might up our reading.
As a region, we've met with other S U's and we, we hosted Slate Valley this summer to talk to them about where we're going and how we use our system. So it's like, it's out there. People know that this exists. People are headed this direction, but I would say that we're likely the tip of the spear certainly in this region of the state. Um, but also kind of State by as well.
This is Kelsey, Kelsey had some. Yeah. Unmuted. You're still muted.
Are you talking to me? I'm sorry, I, I dropped off and I dropped back in.
Okay.
Yes, we're talking to you.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Um, quick question. So I love, I love all the data. I think that's great. But I want to like kind of piggyback on what Dick was saying earlier is that when you have the kiddos in the green, the students in the green at the beginning of the year, like what are we? I'm concerned about like what as a district we're doing for them. Cause we have all the supports in place for the, the kids in the orange and the red. Um, and we've talked about behavior and I think that sometimes when kids are in the green are already at grade level, they're, they can get bored and it affects, you know, learning and can affect the whole class. And I just, I guess I just want to say that I don't, as a district, I don't know if we're doing enough.
Do you want to answer?
I know Skylar said, I heard him say that like, there's ways that the teachers can, um, hold on, Wesley. Teachers can uh, do add-on activities for them, but I just, I, I'm just concerned that, that.
We should be giving as much attention to those kids as the ones that need additional.
And I'm concerned that that, that's not happening.
They're working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, Kelsey, as we look ahead, um, we know that we have a diverse group of learners, right? Like even if you just look at that first graph that, um, that we showed, any class has kids that are above grade level and kids that are below. When we, as we consolidate, it's really challenging with our current system to do a super effective job of meeting that diverse, like diversity of learners and being able to personalize and individualize. And so once we, when we have two classes or more per grade level, it provides that opportunity for there to be um, kind of more efficient groupings of kids. So you can have um, uh, like, you can put this group of kids together in, in the area of reading or math and give them extension activities, application problems, deeper learning opportunities with the standards and the content that they're learning in a way that is easier when you've got more teachers and more resources. So that's one of the things as we look ahead. We continue, I talk about this a lot as I, as I, I think you and I have had a conversation about this. I think it's very, very important within our system that we continue to challenge the system to be um, stretching our practices for our high achieving kids. Um, and so I, anytime a parent or um, you know, through, even through the EST process, we've had sometimes parents who've been said, hey, I want to bring my, my, I want to have an EST meeting because I really want to talk about what my child's plan looks like. So that they are challenged, let's look at their data and let's make sure that their academic program um, is robust. That's been a really effective way to be able to, with parents, really kind of co-create what, what those activities are going to look like. I lean into it. I tell our principals to lean into it. Um, and um, I am not going to hold back on the idea that as we, as we transition into a more efficient, organized system, that we are tending to um, our highest achieving kids in a way that I don't feel like we've done to date. So I think we're getting there. It, it, we're not where I want to be right now. But like I said, I would encourage folks, we don't have the system response the way that I want, but uh, I think scheduling an EST meeting is a really good way to have that personalized conversation about a child with parent and all, all the educators involved to make sure we're doing what's best for them.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate very much.
Thank you. Or you can stay. We have a lot more to talk about.
Yeah, it's just a short bit more.
Superintendent's report.
Yeah, this is still the one from, you know, the last month. Um, as I shared, this is Skylar's first superintendent report that he wrote. So uh, he's here, so that's good too. We've talked about, you know, this is really focusing on. It does, it really fits into what we're talking about. And, and I, I really, um, I know that there were some comments about this being um, sort of potentially overly positive, but I had asked Skylar specifically to highlight some of the really great things that are happening. We hadn't, I hadn't done a lot of that this year. So that was an intentional decision, this particular report, to give board members a sense of some what's happening in our classrooms. So if you have any questions.
But that was a good point that, you know, came up earlier. It's, we know that we're not doing everything right. We should be seeing that in the superintendent reports as well.
Yeah.
You know, we know that, you know, for instance, we know that with five schools, that's been a struggle. So to some extent, it would be good for the board to hear some of, about some of those struggles too and to kind of.
And I, and I think that I, I, it was good, definitely good feedback for me. I felt like I was talking a lot about the struggles. So it was um, helpful to hear that that is something that's important to continue.
Oh, thoughts, questions, David?
So um, this paragraph, we talk about um, multilingual learner program and how the ALE was represented or impressed. It doesn't say what they were, what the secret was, what they were impressed with. They were just impressed that a team established a model that reflects strong systems and deep commitment. But what, what's the ingredient that makes the difference?
So you can. Gil overseas, Title III, which is our uh, multilingual learner program, right? Essentially, we, we've accommodated with, we've accommodated our, our English language learners with um, instructional resources that are in their native language for as much as we can, specifically Spanish students, like, cause that's what major publishers do. Um, we have two wonderful, uh, what do we, interventionist. Multilingual teachers. One of which is only her second year, right, Carrie?
Yes, that's right.
And establish protocols in things like this determining um, whether a student takes an assessment in their native language or if they, we want them to take the English assessment. So just establishing processes. We have become increasingly more diverse in terms of English language learners. And that's what got us the Title III grant uh, last year. And we have a LAO plan, which is not an acronym. And you remind me of that relatively frequently.
Seems like it should be.
That articulates all the services that we provide to those kids and, and how that all takes place. And that is something that the agency, that Gil developed and submitted to the agency. And they, um, the person overseeing Title III specifically is new to her role at the agency and wanted to do field visits and look at our system. So they did a site visit.
Yeah, I would say yes to all that. And we have, we did about a year and a half long process of choosing language acquisition curricula. So we have a suite that we've, we purchased that has three different programs within it for different students at different ages and different levels of English language proficiency. And so we're able to give them the WIDA screener, which is required by the AOE, and place them within the appropriate curricula, use NextFap in our assessment inventory to make sure that they're grouped appropriately within their schools with other students of similar, similar age and level. You're never going to have an exact match with only, I think, you're thirty-two English language learners this year, twenty-eight at MEMS, two at Flubrick and two at Metawi. And so with, with numbers that small, you know, there's going to be some range, but we're able to use these systems to get those kids grouped appropriately. And then also to help us unpack as they grow, whether they need primarily language instruction or literacy instruction, or in fact may have some other struggles such as dyslexia or another learning disability that we need to address. Whereas before, it was all just, you know, the ELL teacher's impression. Um, and so we've just worked really hard to build up our systems to be able to make sure that we are seeing what's really happening with these kids responding.
Great.
Good diagnostics.
Yeah, we're working hard on that.
We used to refer to the feeling, the general sense as the cardiac method. Like I have a feeling this kid needs the service. And now we're way more capable of articulating specific skills, et cetera.
Yeah, when you have those hard conversations where you've got a student who needs English instruction and literacy instruction and math support and social emotional. And you know, we have, um, you know, when we have migrant students or refugee students, they often have so many different needs and it can be difficult in the EST meeting to unpack what's most important. And so just getting as many visible metrics as possible to help people make an educated decision. Uh, so that that kiddo gets the most bang for their buck at school.
Okay, cool. Any other questions or thoughts? All right. Okay, the next thing on here is actually legislative updates. Didn't, you know, we haven't done, haven't done a legislative update for, for a while now because we usually don't do them when. because we usually don't do them when legislation is not in uh, in session. However, there's a, a lot going on. Just wanted to kind of, you know, as a, as a quick, we continue to have, you know, it's, it's group big, we're Thursday night meetings, um, with discussing, you know, how we should be engaging with the whole process. Um, we, you know, we're clearly active this year with, you know, we were communicating to the task force and others multiple times. We started in, uh, back in August and, you know, the most recent communications were actually October twenty-eighth and November seventh as the task force was, uh, approaching, uh, making its decision, which was to kind of punt. Um, and to only put forward one plan that isn't really a, a map. Which isn't all bad, but at the same time, it, uh, it leaves things, you know, drastically open to, to, you know, we, we shall see how things come out. You know, wanted to kind of admit that um, we, we had a few bumps along the way where, you know, there was a point where we've tried to ensure that, you know, we look at our system as we operate a K to twelve system. And, uh, you know, it's a K to twelve system and for, you know, certain of our grades, for certain of our schools, we use other schools to provide that education. So it's important that we stay in sync with our key partners and our key partners, you know, really being, uh, Burn, Burton and Long Trail. There's a point where they weren't sure we were on the same page with them. Uh, we've had multiple meetings with them at the, at the headmaster and the board level. And I think that there's a total recognition that we are totally in sync um, as to what we're trying to, you know, that we're, we're highly focused on ensuring that we continue to be able to provide education the way we have over the years. Um, we're, we're continuing to try to have an impact. Randy was recently in touch with the Secretary of Education who was going to, you know, because there are a lot of question marks coming out of uh, the, the task force hasn't yet delivered their actual report. Um, and, but we kind of know what the report's going to say because, you know, it became obvious they're going to, you know, just put forward one plan and say that, you know, e- essentially they were given the job to go out and interact with the public a whole lot and then come up with, you know, these three maps. And, and their point in their meetings was we, we had all this public input and they told us they don't want maps, which was kind of created an awkward situation for the task force. And I'd say that, that isn't totally off, uh, you know, that's.
To be fair, every map that they proposed suffered under a barrage of really appropriate criticism.
Yes. But I think, I, I think the, you know, one, one point that I'll just, you know, toss out there is I think that the, it, it, it's absolutely true that the, the job that the task force was given was two things. One, probably the wrong job. And number two, an impossible job. So, you know, where, where we stand right now, we've, we've, we've also, we've been in touch with, as we said, our independent school partners. So we're trying to be in, you know, maintain in sync with their. Uh, there, we've also been in touch with, um, uh, you know, particularly Seth Bongardt is the, is the, is the chair of the Senate Education Committee and a person who could have some impact on this. Uh, we, we're setting up in the very near future, meeting with other legislators. So we're kind of, you know, we're, we're continuing to be extremely active and people feel they aren't being updated on this stuff. Feel free to, you know, touch base with, you know, any, you know, any of the board chairs and and, and board leadership. Uh, like, you know, David and Dick is, is TNG board leadership and then all the, all the board chairs have really been involved in this, in this process. So if you have questions, feel free to just reach out and, and ask them. Uh, we're, we're, you know, we've been trying to be as open and communicative as possible, but at the same time, you know, things just keep on happening.
If you really want the short version, call Dean.
Yeah, Dave, Dean is.
Yeah, if you want the long version, call me, you know, basically.
But, um, uh, you know, there, there's a lot of work yet to do. And we're, we're continuing to be totally engaged uh, with the process. And our focus is, I think, you know, our, our focus is to ensure that people understand that. I think, you know, we've, we've, we've started to to toot our own horn here a little bit, saying that we're an extremely successful, you know, we, you know, the numbers are, are, our success with kids and their education, all the work that you guys are doing to improve the quality of education is, is pretty, pretty remarkable. At the same time, you know, kind of started pointing out to, you know, an interesting stat for you that, that was in one of our recent communications, but it's one of my favorites is, is the fact that we've also been very fiscally prudent in our, in our, you know, we, we're doing a great job of education. But at the same time, over the last three years, if you put together our districts, TNG, Metawi, Win Hall, all together, and you look at our education spending, um, over the last three years, um, we have done a good job with education while holding, holding, uh, our, our increases in spending down. And that compounds over time. So over the past three years, if we had grown our budgets, our education spending at the same rate as the overall state education spending, then our fiscal twenty-six budget this year would have been fifteen percent higher than it actually is. That's how fiscally prudent and that's, you know, a ton of that, that goes to these guys, you know, Randy and Sue are phenomenal in that. But I think, you know, we, we've been an example of how to do things and how to, how to actually accomplish what they're trying to accomplish with Act seventy-three. And so we're starting to toot our own horn and say, you know, maybe, maybe we have some ideas that could be useful to you and maybe this little dicky twenty-one hundred student SU isn't, isn't such a bad thing after all. So, um, in any case, that's, so that's.
Yeah, the, the data about the finance is really good, what we're learning from you guys and about how we're right at the head of this, the tip of the spear, as you like to say, for all the, this kind of work, which is so important right now because of AI and everything else. If you're not on top of this, you'll never catch up. So we get to brag about that. That's what he's really saying. He's very grateful for the fact that, that you make us look good.
Absolutely. Anything else? Dan, you, you, you were called out. Anything you want to add?
No, I, I mean, I think your summary was pretty good. I, I don't think there's any reason to get into the weeds, but there's just so much that's that's still up in the air. So there's a lot of decisions that are probably going to happen in the next couple, maybe in the next two months, and then we'll have, then we'll have a much clearer picture of, of where we're headed. But I agree. I think we have a lot to bring to the table. I think it took a long time for the, the key players in this uh, whole situation to recognize that we might have more to bring to the table than meets the eye. Um, but I think we finally got to that point where, you know, uh, the task force spent four months trying to figure this stuff out and we were talking about some of the things that are being talked about now in our first two weeks because we had a really good head start on what the problems were because this is stuff that we've, we all take very seriously. And we try to, we try to do our own internal reforms whenever we can to try to have the best system we can possibly have. We're all in alignment. We're all rowing in the same direction. And so I think we, I think we were, we had a head start in a lot of ways. And it seems like finally the rest of the state is catching up to where we already were.
And I just want to say that, you know, it's, you know, honestly, you know, we've got, okay, I'm one board chair, Dean, Melanie and Julie, that same Dick and David part of, you know, sort of that, that Thursday night team. And honestly, all the, all these people have been working their tails off.
A lot of good heads.
Um, to, to try to, you know, have the, have the best impact for our kids.
I would just add that I, I feel like, um, you know, I like to think about things from like a big picture takeaway to inform future work. I feel like there are really some, some significant commonalities between the work that Teconic and Green has done over the last fifteen months in the process of closing middle schools, meetings that are very public, sharing information, collecting information, and what the re, uh, redistricting task force was asked to do, right? Make some big decisions, collect information from the public, make public presentations and um, and I think that they likely experienced a lot of the same challenges that Teconic and Green did around trying to navigate very, very emotional and personal advocacy from communities and from, you know, from taxpayers who have, who, you know, are experiencing a sense of loss or, um, um, you know, just, uh, I don't know what the right word is, like, um, just upheaval, right? And
Uncertainty.
Uncertainty, right? Like that, that I think that there's some real commonalities and, and I'm incredibly grateful for the Teconic and Green Board and their ability to continue to stay the course. Um, and when you hear that the redistricting task force, first of all, I'm not going to disagree that what they were asked to do was potentially an impossible task.
And the wrong task.
And the wrong task, agreed. And, you know, what we heard them say was we heard from people and people, you know, that influenced them. And so when I think about the big picture of this educational reform across the state, there, there are really, really relevant data points to consider as we move forward. I have said from the beginning that people need to have the courage at the, at, at the highest levels of the state to make things happen. Because people are not going to be happy or satisfied. We need smart people making informed decisions centered on what's best for kids, invest financial, financially and to lead the work. Um, and I just continue to hope that people have the courage to focus our kids, focus on the educational opportunities and outcomes, fiscal efficiency, and keep the right things at the center of decision-making because otherwise they will continue to be pulled apart by competing priorities. Um, and, and if we do, if we allow that, we won't ever be doing what's right for the kids across the state. So that's it. Just my sort of comparison there that I, I can't help but identify for myself.
Questions, thoughts? Okay. Reflect on norms. I think we're still tagging in there, doing okay. Public comments? Don't think we.
We have, there is somebody.
Yeah, Kristy, you, we have public here. Any comments or thoughts? Now's the time. Okay, um, our, our next meeting, December fifteenth. Now, you know, keep in mind, guys, that's going to be, we're going to be asked to, we have to pass the BRSU budget so they can fit into all the other district budgets. So next time around, we're going to get, be getting the spend budget and, and have to approve both of them on that date. So, uh, take another look at the general budget. We'll get the spend budget in advance, but be prepared to, you know, to, to have all your homework done and have all your questions ready to be answered.
You're going to be designing this one with the, with the full implementation of the new rules for, around special education funding?
There's not.
The, it's the block.
One seventy-three, which is, it's been in place.
Yeah, it's been in place. And actually, this is, this new year is where everybody is finally, it's going to be the first year, everybody's finally on the same page rate for funding, um, uh, for Act Boy Twenty-seven. That's, that's four years out from when we, when we initially did this. But, uh, but Caitlin will obviously be taking all of that into consideration and things that we were talking about.
Is there much change that we can implement specifically with our system around one seventy-three?
We're, we're going to be talking about that. Yes, there is. And, um, yes. Yeah.
Maybe, maybe if you, in your comment, you could outline some of the decisions and recommendations that you might make.
It's not going to be fiscally based. It's not tied to the budget. It's tied to practice.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So.
Terms delivery and so forth.
But I think that's where districts around the state are still doing things the way they always did.
Yep.
Well, they need to change to
Yep.
actually fit into the new world.
Correct.
Yeah.
And to really, really be, again, centering our kids.
So it is appropriate to ask, what are the changes we're making? I think that's sort of like.
Well, we don't, we're, we're not there yet. You can ask, but the answer will still be the same in two weeks.
Fifteenth, you may have made some decisions.
No, no, we won't. We won't have anything that's meaningful or relevant at that point to talk about. It's, it's, it's work that, you know, Caitlin and Skylar and Gilam are really diving into very intentionally. It's going to take time to talk about how do we approach this? We're talking about training or, I mean, we're really, but I don't, I won't have anything in two weeks to talk to you about. Neither will anybody else, I don't think.
So we're ahead of the others, but we aren't there yet.
No.
Okay. Okay, we can vote today.
Any other comments or? Any other comments, thoughts or things we should be bringing up in future meetings? If not, I guess I'll take that other motion.
I move to adjourn after congratulations for a wonderful presentation.
All in favor? Say aye or? Okay, I'll call that again.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.